So I will call this meeting of the Arlington School Committee Community Relations Subcommittee to order. Uh, because of what the governor says, we are able to conduct this remotely via Zoom. Um, for anybody who is here, uh, two of the community members who are attending are recording their, the meeting on their own devices. So we just want to make sure everybody knows that. Um, and I think we're gonna do the agenda out of order. So we're gonna, instead of starting with community relations listening sessions, we're gonna start with the welcome center. Data and uh, so that Wes can, doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting. So I don't know Liz or Wes, which of you is gonna?
I'll hand off to Wes. Um, I just made you go host.
Let me share my screen?
Yeah. Is it not letting you?
Sorry, I lost all for a moment. Sorry, I'm sharing right now. Are you all seeing the slideshow?
Yep.
Alright, perfect. Alright, awesome. My name is Wesley Tianpi. I'm the Director of Communications and Family Engagement. Um, and I oversee the Office of Communications and Family Engagement. Um, today I'm here to talk to you all about some of the work that the Welcome Center has been doing. Um, and just some of the events and kind of just some of the impact of the work um, of the Welcome Center. Just to refresh everybody, the Welcome Center was created out of strategic priority four, sustaining collaborative partnerships of our five-year strategic plan, which called for a welcome center and the centralization of registration, family engagement, and communication for the district. Awesome. So some of the work that is done by the over, by um, my department is that we oversee the Welcome Center. The purpose of that space is to guide families through the enrollment process. We manage district-wide communications. We support with um, translation and language access for all families who require um, support with languages other than English. We support district-wide with family engagement initiatives and we support our sustainability initiatives in our sister city partnership with Japan. Alright, so specifically for the Welcome Center, um, it has become a hub and really a compass for the district. Whether families are new, returning, or have been here, families come to the Welcome Center as a place to figure out where to get their questions answered, whether we're answering them or directing them directly to someone else, whether it be the classroom teacher or a principal or what have you. Um, the district, the Welcome Center really has become a hub for all resources, internal and external in the community. And it really has helped a lot of families transition smoothly to new schools and especially for our multilingual learners and newcomers. Having a space to come in real time to get support and connection has been really um, great with helping families transition into our district. Um, part of the strategic plan had called for us to create a needs assessment to figure out what exactly does the district need out of the Welcome Center and what services for us to provide. So we created um, a, just a simple Google form that asked questions such as, when did you move to the community? Um, how many adults are in your household? How many children are in your household? What are some of the needs that you have? And this launched, uh, I think it was January of last year. Within the first few submissions, it became clear that it couldn't be a needs assessment and it really needed to be a support request. As some of the requests we were getting were things that were immediate needs such as, I need food support for my family. I lost my job. I need help finding a job. Um, my husband was diagnosed with cancer and I need someone to let the staff know in four different buildings that this is what we're doing, this is what we're going through right now and I don't have capacity to do that. So the needs assessment though was going to tell us what we needed to do, ended up being what we were doing in real time as we were gathering the information. Um, so the support request is a tool used community-wide. Um, townwide, town services uses it when a family visits. They've filled out support requests so that we know what um, families are seeking support from Denisea with the Health and Human Services Department. The nurses use it to, to um, request things like clothing, um, items for their students. Families are using it to request support with any of the topics you're seeing here, whether it be housing, cost savings programs, mental health support, what have you. All sorts of needs are being captured um, district-wide and it's really been like a great tool for the entire district really to use and kind of know where families are right now and what they need. So some of the biggest asks that we're seeing are around food, having enough food for their families and around things such as clothing, shoes, winter gear and um, school supplies um, as well. So um, specifically our process, so support requests and community partnerships. We work directly with the town and with our um, counseling and uh, I'm blinking on Magali's title. Um, remind me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly. Thank you. So we work really closely with all the different departments in order to make sure families' needs are met pretty quickly. Um, so anything having to do with housing and employment, we tag our Arlington Community Resource Specialists, who's Denise Abert. Anything having to do with food, we connect those families directly with Arlington Eats. So we send them the information and we also let Arlington Eats know, hey, this family, so that the connection is happening both ways. Anything requests having to do with clothing and full school supplies, we invite families into Spy Ponder Threads and we also connect them directly with our Sustainability Project Manager Rachel Oliveri, who also reaches out. So what we found was instead of just doing the one-way push, the Welcome Center is able to come at it both ways, where we both give the family the, the information and we connect with a district staff member to do the reach out as well, which has made it less likely that kind of information just falls flat. For the most part, like ninety-five percent of the time, families' needs are met one way or another, either by the district or by us connecting them with um, resources outside the district. Anything having to do with mental health support for elementary and middle school, we connect them directly with Magali, who connects with the social worker at the school, who connects directly with the family. If it's AHS, we connect them with Scott O'Brien. Registration, obviously, we handle that directly. Any requests having to do with after-school care, we connect them with the Director of After-School, which is Todd, which then he's either working directly with the family to find them a spot, or he's collecting that as data as ways to increase um, spaces and capability for after-school care in coming years, based on the requests we're getting. And for wifi, transportation, and other requests, we handle that with the Welcome Center team. With wifi, T-Mobile actually ha, offers, I think it's five years of free wifi for any K-12 family. For transportation, we were able to get um, some Charlie cards uh, with a grant from a homeless grant, grant from last year and tons of other requests that we get. Um, so like I told you all earlier, the biggest ask that we've gotten and we've been able to actually easily fulfill um, are around clothing items, footwear, and personal care essentials. So the, or the bulk of my presentation today will be about the Spy Ponder Threads. Um, our tagline is sustainability is always in style. Um, the Spy Ponder Threads is a community closet that benefits all APS students, families, and staff. It's an expansion of an existing um, closet that was started by a nurse, I think it was in twenty seventeen, where she saw a need with um, her students needing just access to kind of clothing and whatnot. Um, so this central closet is located right in the Welcome Center. Um, right in central office. Um, it's a welcoming and super organized space where APS community members can access clothing, shoes, personal care items, backpacks, and school supplies. It's worked really well, especially with a lot of our newcomer families. A lot of them are arriving with nothing more than just the clothes on their backs. So having that experience, whether it's two, three hours where they're sitting down registering with us and then going into the closet and shopping for what they need, has been really, really transformative for a lot of our new families, being able to just get everything that they needed right in one go. So um, in January of twenty twenty-five, Arlington, the Arlington Education Fund awarded us twenty thousand dollars um, for the expansion of the Ponder Threads and they requested that we have a satellite location in one middle school. We were able to do it in more than just one middle school. We have a satellite location at the Thompson Elementary, the Gibbs Middle School, the Odysseum, and we were able to expand the nurse's office at the high school. The one in this picture actually is an, is the expansion. At first, they kind of just had this cupboard that was super disorganized. We were able to use parts of the grant to buy them some just organizational materials to just make it a more welcoming space so that students are able to come in and access. And we kind of like serve as, like their um, kind of like their storage. So when there are things that they need that they can't fit in their space, we hold it in hours. So each clothing, each satellite location has clothing that is kind of to the size of the student. So Thompson Elementary has kind of K to five sizes, the middle school has middle school sizes, and then the high school, et cetera. Um, deodorant, mensual surprise, concert performance attire. So at certain times of the year, there are certain very specific niche items that are needed. We work with our PTOs and I'll talk about that a little bit more, to kind of source the specific things that families need at a certain time so that they're not having to repurchase that every year. And then we're able to store and then for subsequent years, being able to like have students use, whether it's black shoes, black pants, having those things um, available. I actually met with the person who was coordinating um, the Nature's Classroom. We're looking to either source um, or purchase some of those items that students need recurring. So sleeping bags, waterproof boots, some of those items that families weren't able to get in years past. Um, even duffel bags were a big ass. A lot of students were bringing rolly um, suitcases because that's all they had, which then meant that we needed to have larger buses. So we're gonna work on having duffels available for students to use. So we won't need coach buses hopefully and can use our, our school buses to be able to like bring things back and forth. So the sustainability aspect is really the heart of what we're doing here in the Welcome Center with the Spy Ponder Threads. So as I had said before, over half of the families who submit a support request form indicated their need um, for the items that we now provide by the Ponder Threads. So sustainability always, is always in style, reflects the district's commitment to reducing its environmental impact through waste of diversion, environmental education initiatives. This five hundred threads promotes the reuse and of clothing and supplies with a majority of the closet originating from donations, lost and found collections, and Arlington's swap shed. So as you can see, our numbers skyrocketed last year, not last year, last week, we did um, a huge warm-up for winter event that was really spearheaded in a lot of ways by our PTOs, who each did um, and I'll skip over a little bit, who each did um, a drive at each of their schools. I called them and we, we had a big kind of meeting that we had with our PTOs. We meet um, every so often and our meeting specifically was about SNAP, the SNAP benefits being cut and kind of what we can do to support families. Each um, PTO lead decided to pick a thing that they wanted their school to kind of be responsible for and source. We knew that we were gonna have this huge influx of all these supplies. So the team decided to do this big event that was actually like a really big deal. Um, we had hundreds of coats, hundreds of people stopped by to grab all the things that they needed and it was great. So I'll talk about that a little bit more. I'm gonna go backwards a little. Um, so this is just some of the data on some of the inventory being distributed. Um, the bags of clothes, coats is a really big one, shoes, backpacks, and bags of toiletries, just so you can understand kind of like the, the range of items that we're able to both source and give out to families. The people that are visiting the families, APS staff, we get a ton of APS staff members that are either stopping by to grab things for themselves, their families, and ninety-five percent of the time, it's for their families and students that they're picking things up for. We have tons of middle school and high school students that are stopping by to pick up stuff for themselves and of course, families um, being our biggest um, user of this space. Um, thread pondering. So we get a ton of just quotes from families, um, of families and staff of like just the things that they're experiencing. So we had a single mom who found two fancy pink dresses for her daughter's birthday. She didn't have the finances to kind of buy her daughter a gift. She was, she was really happy to find um, a donation that was able to support that. A high schooler came to pick out new shoes for his little sister because theirs had worn out. A transportation worker didn't have a real winter coat, stopped by to pick one out. Um, we've had families, we had a mom stop by who talked about, and this made me super emotional. She said, her quote was, she said, if they say it takes a village and I'm a single mom and I don't have that, but this, this feels like I maybe have a village after all. And she was able to stop by and get kind of all the things that she needed. Um, we had a staff member who provides academic support at the middle school, being able to get binders to bring back to OMS to kind of stock their closet. Because of the after-school help, typically some of the students that stop in that space for the after-school help do need extra things. So having that OMS closet there, so the way OMS has it structured is the person that oversees the closet is also the person that does the after-school help. So having that clear direction and connection where the student after-school could stop by when nobody's around, kind of get what they need and take that home has worked out really well. And obviously, students who need things for like professional clothing that they may not have or need to have all the time are able to stop by, get button-down shirts and pants that they may need. So our process, so we receive donations from the community, PTO drives, lost and found swap sheds, local churches, um, tons of just different businesses, um, luxury buildings, wanting to kind of tap into the things that they do. So a lot of them run drives um, for us. If the donations need to be watched, we give them to the APS Life Skills Program at the high school. They wash and fold and bring things back over. Um, we have, we've started a volunteer program which has been huge. Tons of community members have been queried and now are working, volunteering countless hours organizing, because it's a beast of a project and we're also down staff. Um, so having tons and tons of volunteers that are either moms that work from home, retired community members that just want to give back to the schools, people that have graduated years and years ago and have been trying to figure out what are ways to connect back with the schools, have really found like a new home working in the Welcome Center. So if you walk by at any given time, there'll be a new face in there, either organizing stuff, cleaning stuff down. It's been just really just a great hub for people to kind of give back. And it's this beautiful kind of cycle. If you think of what the recycling sign looks like, in terms of the stuff, in terms of the time, in terms of the resources that it, it, uh, Arlington has, it really has been able to just give back in a lot of ways. So families.
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
When you, you, you've, you've said tons a lot and so that doesn't have, like it's hard to know what that means. Like, so how many volunteers do you have?
Well, right now, we have ten volunteers and we have quite a few that are like going through the um, the query process.
Okay.
And that's a combination. We have, oh, we have, I think, five or six like high school students that are like consistently volunteering. We currently, I think, have five community members and quite a few um, community members in the process to be queried. Thank you for asking that clarifying question.
I have my query right here.
Yeah, awesome. Right now, I saw your application. Thank you for applying. Um, what's next? So school collaboration, obviously, we collaborate with every department district-wide, every single building. Community partnerships, we're working with the town side. We work directly with Arlington Eats, also with the Swap Shed. Who's donating? We work really close with Karen Lee, who is the Swap Shed Manager. PTOs have been monumental in being able to go through lost and founds and running clothing um, drives for us. We also, with the last clothing drive, put um, bins at the police station, the fire station, and the rink. And over the weekend, we were able to bring in over a hundred coats just from those three days, which closed a huge gap that we had for adult um, jackets. We had a huge ask for a number of adult jackets that we didn't have until we ran that kind of town-wide um, town-wide drive. So that was great. Um, and like I talked about the PTO support, who's volunteering, like I said, PTO uh, members, we had student volunteers, interns, life skill programs that helps us do laundry. Two of our biggest events that I really want to talk about that were really important in kind of like putting our department on the map and making it clear to everybody what it is that we do. We did our Tools for Back to School event, which happened the week before school started. It was a two-part event. The part one was a virtual new family orientation and what that really did was set up all families to be on the same level in terms of district information. Hours for schools, who to contact about what, how the American school system works for our new families. Um, how to, how the bus transportation works, how food services work, kind of what is all the information I need to know as a newcomer or a new person to Arlington Public Schools, how does this school work? So that's what that did. And then the part two of that event was later in the afternoon, we invited all families who were in need to come in to get school supplies and clothing items to start school. And then we had, I think, three hundred families for that event. I have data for that too. The second big event that we did, we've done other little events, but the second biggest event that we did was the Warm-Up for Winter, Warm-Up for Winter event that we did this past week, where the data shows we gave hundreds of quotes away, essential items, um, toiletries, and tons of different supports. We had Arlington Eats, we had the Swap Shed, we had the Health and Human Services, we had the Arlington Housing Association, and we had um, I think it was Denisea who had uh, resources around uh, heating costs and having ways to kind of bring those down. So the way we set it up is all families kind of had to go through tables to meet all these vendors and then they went in, they got their shoes, they got their coats, all the winter essentials that they needed and left. So some of the areas for growth and further consideration, we have a lot of people that want to donate just cash funds. So obviously, we're not able to kind of take those in bulk. So trying to figure out what are like, what are ways that we can figure out taking in cash so that we can purchase that with the things that we need. So kind of like underwear, toiletries, those are the things that we can't often get just donated. Um, those personal care items, like what are ways we can like purchase those? Um, several of our donors have asked for documentation. So we've kind of worked with the business department to figure out what is the documentation that we're giving to families once they do donate. Storage space is a big thing. We need to give a lot and we don't have a lot of storage and kind of keeping the cycle of washing, donating, washing, donating, putting back is something that we're working on for storage. And we would like to have our volunteers help with laundry. So figuring out what are ways that we can access the laundry services at the, the laundry facilities at the high school on a more consistent basis is something that we're working on. And these are just some of the district resources that we have. And I am happy to take any questions that anyone has for me.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Cheryl?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, I can hear you.
Um, so I have like a quick question and then I guess. Um, so.
We're gonna just take the question, Cheryl. We have a really packed agenda and we don't have public comment on the agenda. So if you could ask your question.
Okay, um, I guess my question is like, I, I, previously at least, maybe currently, there was an item on the form to ask for help with attendance. Um, and I'm curious, you presented data, uh, like a list of categories and I was wondering if help with attendance falls under special education, if it falls under mental health and like, what actual help with attendance do you offer? Cause I did try to get help and you were, you tried very hard, but it wasn't going to help.
Yep. So with attendance specifically, we support the schools with supporting the families with attendance. So if a family supports, if a family submits a support request looking for attendance support, depending on what they ask for, for the most part, we direct them right back to the schools. So it really depends on what the need is. If the need requires a resource outside of the district, our kind of job as the Welcome Center is to help bring those in or connect them, connect families directly to outside resources. But if it's something having to do specifically with the school, we connect the family back to the school to help with that support.
I would add to that, that it kind of depends on what the source of the attendance challenge is. If it's operationalized in like after-school care. So there are some instances where access to after-school care is really transformative because of the family's work schedule. Then we'll work with our after-school program at the school to figure out what the barrier has been to obtaining that and then see if we can't eliminate that barrier if there's an income gap or something else that's causing the issue.
Another one is also transportation. Yeah, exactly. Another one's also transportation. So we've supported families and kind of working with like a high school volunteer to help walk a kid to school. When it comes to things like that, that's kind of where I'll be in operationally. But typically, like, yeah, if it is mental health, I would connect that person with Magali Olander. If it is something special ed-related, I would connect with a, with a chair. So it all depends on the reason. So depending on what your specific situation was, Cheryl, I would have connected you with the person who is the closest to supporting your family with the ask that you had.
Laura, I have a question if I can.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, so uh, Wes, great presentation. I read the deck beforehand and um, listened into part of what you had to say. Uh, so first of all, I think it's a needed service. So thank you for organizing it. I think it's added a lot to the community. Uh, we, you know, when you, you talked about uh, the shut-off of SNAP benefits, the rules are changing because of the bill signed by President Trump in the summer in which um, immigrants and refugees who do not have green cards cannot get SNAP benefits. And that's a lot of people and maybe a lot of people in Arlington. And I'm wondering what, what you would do. Would you kind of, you would just kind of um, kind of refer them to Arlington Eats, partner with Arlington Eats? Is that our plan?
Actually, so right now, we're working with Arlington Eats and AHS specifically to figure out if it would make sense to have a bit of a satellite location that would serve our families a bit more directly as a second spot. So I'm working with Bill McCarthy at the high school. There is like a space available where he's looking to see if it would work ventilation-wise to get some refrigerators. Liz, I know you're hearing this for the first time. I never I haven't talked to you about this because it's influx, but we're working on potentially having a space where we can have like a second kind of spot for families to come. The great thing about Arlington Eats is none of that matters to them. It doesn't matter. So as long as you can prove residency in Arlington, in Arlington, you're able to access Arlington Eats at a hundred percent. So we're really fortunate in that sense.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Liz?
Uh, thank, thank you and Wes, thank you for all of um, the details provided here. Um, it's, it's I guess, uh, so um, I look at sort of the strategic plan and the sort of goals and objectives of the Welcome Center and communications and I'm trying to sort of under, like, I don't know, eighty percent of these slides are about sort of this, the Threads closet. Um, and there's not, there's not a lot in the sort of strategic plan around specifically around that. I know it says like finding out what people need and it's, that is clearly a need and you're working to fulfill that. Um, but I guess I'm concerned about some of the things that are in here that we didn't hear about. So for example, like translation services, I know you had got all these new devices, like how frequently are they being used? Are teachers feeling better about um, having conferences with families who don't speak English? Um, I'm wondering about sort of other a, aspects of communication. I think that the, the website, um, there are still a lot of inconsistencies there. Um, you know, names of principals who haven't been the principal here in numbers of years. You go to the Stratton website on your phone and you can't find the safe arrival line. Um, and so I it's, this is probably unpopular opinion, but I, I am personally concerned about how much time, uh, you know, you talked about this is a beast of a project and I'm down staff and I have all these volunteers and I'm worried about how much time is being spent um, on this, this Threads closet versus other aspects of, of engagement. And you know, when I look at the numbers here, a hundred and twenty respondents, twenty-nine well, um, on this and ninety-three responses on topics that you're interested in learning more about. Um, that's like, I don't know, like two percent of the six thousand students. And so I'm a, I'm a little bit worried that we're investing a lot of time and energy in um, into something that I feel like should be more of a, of a town so, social services support. I think referring families is, is great, but I am concerned that, that school staff are getting a little bit lost in that and not in some of these other things that are written in the strategic plan and the just, the focus of the department. And I don't know if that's a directed at Liz Hellman. I don't know. That's just, I'm a statement I'm making now.
I'm gonna start by responding.
Okay.
Give me a sec. Because I think contextually, like I should have opened by framing why this is on this meeting um, a little bit more. Uh, Wes had prepped some explanation because we had gotten so many questions about some of the events that were supporting really what we were finding during the enrollment process, which is a major arm of Wes's department. So there are sort of three arms of Wes's department. Registration, enrollment, family engagement, communication um, being those arms. And there are a couple of different pieces that have gone together here. So first, the slides that were prepped were about the Spy Ponder Closet. They were about that one arm. I shared those with Laura. And then we were asked to go to a conference this week by Desi. I was planning on talking about hiring practices because it was focused on like why we had done well with outcomes and I was going to present. And then I was sick. But Wes had already made slides just as informational support for the Spy Ponder Closet and was planning on going to the conference anyway. So I said, hey, why don't you polish these and like present them? And at almost exactly the same time, Laura said, we have a meeting coming up. Why don't we incorporate some of this? But this is not intended to be an update on all of the activities of the Welcome Center. So I just want to clarify that this deck was So I just want to clarify that this deck was developed in an effort to help answer some of the questions that I know are surfacing and are the reason why you're asking some of this Liz, about the activities going on in the welcome center. But the focus on this has, while it has involved other members of Wes's department, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this Wes. Uh, the communication specialist focuses on communications, website development, all of that during the day.
Yeah.
And during her regular working time.
Yep.
Enrollment focuses on enrollment. Uh, this is a sustainability coordinator's work that the district has absorbed. It was a town employee in DPW, the, the sustainability coordinator, but whose salary I learned a few years ago, we were paying. And I believe because the donation bins are at the schools, uh, at some point, it was an agreement, I don't think I was here yet, that we were going to update, like obtain that salary as part of our budget. And we hadn't ever had really, uh, department for that human, nor much support for her. And so I decided when we had the welcome center, she needs a department. And so Wes adopted the role into the department. And this work has been that arm of the department. And her building out some of the infrastructure to actually support some of the donations that she would get in to the bin, um, the bins at the schools, organizing our ability to get some of those resources back out to families. The website is a major source of frustration for both Wes and I. We have asked the web. So the problem is that we migrated old content to the new site. And that people still use the search function to find things. And that surfaces sites, surfaces pages that are not in the navigation on the site, but are still there. They're like in the background.
They're like ghost pages.
They are ghost pages. The website vendor at Leo will not let us access the backend like, uh, site map for the site. So we can't delete those pages without searching for them, finding them and deleting them. And that's kind of impossible because you kind of have to guess how to search right to find the thing. And so it's, and what we've, we have done several things. We have asked the vendor to delete everything that hasn't been accessed in the last three years. Like, could you just go find everything that hasn't been hit in the last three years and delete all of it? They told us no. We have asked them to give us access to the site map. They told us no. We, we have, I, we have tried going and finding things. Whenever you all send us something, we go and find it and she deletes it.
Correct.
I am not sure how to solve for this problem at this point outside of us starting over with a new vendor. And we can do that through Parent Square.
Yep, exactly.
And it's very, very frustrating though, because we spent significant resources on this. It felt like the right idea at the time to migrate the content from the old site because we didn't have anybody in communications to do a full blown rebuild from nothing. But here we are now, people feeling like all of the work that we've put into it has been for nothing because they'll still use that search bar or they'll still search just Google. And it will take them to this ghost page that we had didn't, isn't in our navigation, didn't realize was there. Now some, it is the case that there are still some of those pages that are hidden in the navigations on the right hand side. If you go to a page. And so Christina's been going through each page, but I just wanted to name that sort of challenge with the website. It, it is not for lack of significant lack, it's not for lack of effort. It's we, we've really tried to fix that then. I, I'm out of solutions.
Right. So we're still going through those pages. Christina's full-time job is dedicated to all things cons and she's going through that website pretty much non-stop. So as people find things, it's like, we're so eternally grateful when you do, because then we're able to actually address it because you cannot find it unless you find it pretty much. Which is very bizarre, but that's the reality of the website.
Just go through each navigation.
And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we should, um, just because time is really an issue here, if we can plan for another community relations meeting in the next year where we can spend more time talking about the other things, the, the other, the questions that Liz had about, you know, things beyond the spy ponders. Beyond the spy, can you please stop doing that? It's like a squeaky noise. Um, uh, beyond the spy ponders threads, if we can just sort of say, we'll talk about that in the new year, because it's four thirty-nine and we, I know we're not going to get through our agenda.
Oh, I want to say one more thing to what Liz was saying too. Um, that, oh shoot. I lost it. Sorry. It's gone.
Does that make sense to you to, that we can spend some more time on the rest of this?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, I, yes.
Oh, it was that we've also said the same thing you did Liz about, um, shifting some of this to town resourcing.
Yes.
Other community members can access.
Yes. Yeah, I'm in about trying to figure out like, this really should live with the town because it's such a big thing. Um, and it's taking a lot of resources and I'm happy to give them our volunteers and they could kind of go with. I'm hoping to like give them a full package. They just need to create like a space. Um, but that is the goal. The goal is not for us to keep this forever. The goal was for us to identify the need as the needs assessment said. And now working to kind of like reconfigure where that's going to go so that we can co- go back to focusing on like the core. Um, so yeah, thank you for naming that and giving me the opportunity to share that.
Great. And so I'm just gonna have one other thing, because I, one of the things I'm thinking about is with this, the donations. I wonder if the town might have a it might be easier, easier for the town to accept.
Accept donations. Yeah.
Well, it's, it's more complicated. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, sorry to cut that off.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Have a good weekend.
Um, okay. So I, I'm looking at the agenda and I think that I would like to talk about the listening sessions. I think we can put off the um, after school question unless that is of the wait, after school waitlist question. Can we, is there any urgency to talking about that?
I don't have. What was that? Hold on. I don't have information ready.
Okay, then let's.
So let's table that one.
Okay. And then I will quickly, just so I don't forget, let everybody know that we have had no applicants for our human uh, rights commission or spot. So we need, I need to talk to them and check with the town and see if they have anybody that's, you know, out there who's been interested. I reached out to people we'd interviewed in the past and or that I had talked to in the past and I haven't gotten anything. So, um, let's move on to the, uh, listening session proposal. Um, just to, I'm gonna let Liz take over in a minute, but just to give some context, this, um, Liz Homan and I have talked a number of times over the last, since I became chair of the subcommittee about trying to rethink what we do and beyond these sort of discrete topics that we're talking about, like the welcome center, what makes sense in terms of community interaction, um, uh, sort of based on an iteration of things that have happened over the past. And I think Liz will talk about that a little bit. So this, uh, is coming out of a very brief conversation that Liz and I had like last week or two weeks ago. Um, where she, we started sort of spitballing the listening sessions. And so this is the beginning of talking about what that would be and how the subcommittee would want to be involved.
So I would not even call this a proposal. This is, uh, spitballing is the right word to use. I think we were trying to imagine formats that could serve many purposes and serve some shared purposes, I think, for the committee and for me. Um, I know that there is, uh, there, there have been questions about why we haven't done the community relations subcommittee in the way that it was done in the past. And I've spoken with um, Liz Exton about this when she was chair of this committee as well. Uh, and some of the history behind that was that, um, when I started, it was as we were coming out, well, I guess we're still very much in the pandemic. Um, and we had done the community relation. That was when Bill Hayner was the chair of the subcommittee. Uh, had done the, um, sort of coffee hours on the Saturdays. One of the challenges with that was that community members would bring concerns to committee members. Um, some of which were very specific to their family situation and that com- committee members couldn't act upon. Um, just because it was outside the scope of the school committee. And so then what would generally happen is because of the format and the norms that have been established for the coffee times, uh, was that there was anonymity and that, uh, we would, they would share notes back with the administration. Was that we would hear about things that were concerning to community members, but we wouldn't know who, we wouldn't know any details, we wouldn't know what. And so it was, we couldn't act on it. And that was frustrating frankly. Um, because we wanted to be able to, to do something about it. It was also, I think frustrating for committee members because they couldn't really do anything about it and they couldn't tell us, uh, what was going on. And we've also heard from folks that those were really valued because they offered an opportunity for dialogue. And so um, we had pivoted at one point for a year in doing some specific topics that we announced ahead of time. Um, one of the challenges with that is that if you were interested in that topic, but the time didn't work for you, then you didn't get to engage in the discussion. And so, and then we didn't get to hear from you. Um, and so Laura and I were trying to think through like, what are things that are very specific to the role of the school committee? So if the school committee is going to be engaging with the community, they can engage and hear about things that they can act upon. Um, we also talked about how do we cut the middle between having a forum, which isn't as intimate and doesn't allow for us to deeply understand people's experiences with the schools. Um, and the coffees, which provided for that, uh, but weren't as shared between the administration and the school committee. I, one of the challenges I had with the coffee hour thing was that, um, I couldn't go. Uh, they were often on Saturdays. I appreciate that the committee does not expect me to necessarily be in Arlington on a Saturday. Uh, however, would have come because I think us doing those sorts of things together is valuable. So this is based on something that the cabinet team's been doing and that I did as part of my entry plan. Um, the listening sessions, the way they get structured is we have very, very few questions that are designed to elicit stories and specific experiences. We limit participation in the conversations and we've been doing these interviews since September as a senior leadership team um, around as, in, in an effort to gather data to support some of our budget planning. And so the new, I updated the memo that's in Novus. If you scroll all the way down, there's actually some of the, um, findings and themes from the data we've collected so far. We've done thirteen group interviews and we spread out the load uh, as a senior team. So that, you know, it's two of us maybe in a four, in a session with five people asking the questions. One of us is taking notes. One of us is facilitating the conversation. Um, but we're really not doing a whole lot of talking. We're trying to help to understand people's experiences. So we do a lot of, tell me about that, or what was the time that was uh, important to you? Or can you tell a story about when that happened and what that felt like? And so what we're trying to get out of those is a really deep and detailed understanding of what people's experiences with our schools are. Um, what we've been trying to do around the budget build in particular is to gain some of that insight in ways that helps us understand what our successes have been, what people's key worries are when it comes to thinking about potential cuts. Um, what some of the challenges are that staff have so that if we can be opportunistic in making a staffing adjustment, maybe we can address some of those challenges. Um, and so I provided some of the synthesized, uh, findings that we have so far down at the bottom, in case you're curious about what comes out of this. Um, and then I just gave a little bit of a breakdown of what it could look like to organize something like this. It would have to be a shared load situation. So multiple of us would have to agree to do it. You can spread the dates out across more months. Um, there are a few key, if you, if you take an approach like this and we share some of the load of facilitating sessions, um, there are a few key things you want to make sure you do, which is ask all the same questions, uh, limit participation, but have a lot of different sessions at different times and different locations and in different formats. Um, and so there are a lot of different ways you can organize setting that up. I had talked to Wes about helping me organize this for me to do. Um, about a month ago. And so when Laura brought it up, I said, you know, I was already planning on trying to do something like this. What if we did something like this together? And so she asked me to write up what that could look like and it gave me an opportunity to sit down and think about it. So that was what this was. And I wrote it in probably about a half hour. So when I say it's drafty, it's drafty. And, um, I put a little more thought into it and adjusted a little bit today, but it's really there for discussion purposes only. So.
Um, sorry, I'm taking minutes and going back and forth. Do, uh, any of the committee members have any comments or questions about sort of this jet, either what Liz wrote specifically or the like more general, like what we might want to do in terms of these kind of conversations?
I can.
Yeah.
So I, I am glad that we're having the conversation about finding ways for the, um, community to have opportunities to, to give us feedback. Um, this and maybe it's just like these dates within a like six week period feels really ambitious. Um, one of the things that I found when I was organizing, um, the chats previously is that it's, it was really hard to get two committee members, um, to do something. I mean, it was one Saturday. At first it was once a month, then it was every other month. Um, so I, as I said, I looked at this, these dates and I just, it felt very ambitious.
Trying to freak people out. We'll do it too.
Uh, I, I, I mean, I think like, if you, if Liz, if you want to do this as the superintendent have listening sessions, I think that's fantastic. Um, I'm not sure it accomplishes the school committee being the listeners also, which I think is important. Um, so that's just sort of, again, I, things that I'm thinking as I, as I looked at this, I think spreading it out might make more sense um, for the school committee. Um, and I had one other thing I was thinking about it. Oh, the other piece that I will just put out there as a, um, sort of comments that we got when we would have the chats, because then I think we tried to co-host some. There were some families that were concerned about the administration being there and concerns of, um, you know, retaliation or things like that. So I ju- like, I do feel like I need to name that again. And how do we set this up to make this feel like a safe space for families to, to share, um, them, their, their thoughts. So those are just, those are my thoughts right now.
Yeah, I would, I would add, I, I would echo what, um, Liz Exon just said, um, I as someone who would, you know, I, it, it, I, what I, what I want to make sure is, so in these listening sessions, Liz Homan, are you thinking of, um, like you guys would run them and we would be there to, to listen and participate, just kind of listen and take notes?
So what I had written in here was that either one of us and one of you could be at them. Or two of you could be at them or two of us could do it.
Yeah.
The data is going into one place so that we collectively
Yeah.
collecting the data. We collectively are participating and doing these. Our team could take on the bulk of them. Um, as, as long as, in order for it to feel like something that is giving people a chance to listen to the committee, then obviously you'd want to be part of some of them. Um, right now, that was, this was literally just like the free times in my calendar at the moment, which all of them probably aren't still available. And it was also in an effort to show the variation that you're looking for. So I only went through January because, you know, setting holds through May is was going to be hard to then release them. But it was more to show the times and the days and the differences in times that you want to go for because the, and if I set the hold, then I can look at a list in my calendar. It's easy for, easier for me to write them down. So quite literally, this was a, this was a practice in efficiency of giving you a list as an example. This was not me proposing these dates. I just want to be really clear about that. I was not saying, let's do these. Let's, let's not do that. I agree. That's overwhelming. It was to show the way you set it up in terms of time because you want people to be able to access it. And so when I did the listening sessions for the entry plan, we did some in person, we did some on Zoom, we did some in the evening, we did some in the morning, we did some in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
If, if you do all of those things, it's much easier to get an actual cross section of the community in the voices that you're listening to. Um, and if you have a shared format and shared questions, then you're not worried about so and so is going to do this in one way and so and so is going to do it in a completely different way. And so the data that you have is not comparable. The stories that you have were elicited in The stories that you have were elicited in dramatically different situations. Which makes it a little easier if you're trying to get at something specific. To kind of have a cross-section of experiences to say, okay, this is reality for our community. How do we respond to this? How do we plan around this? How do we act upon it? Um, there are, if you look at the example data in the memo that's now in Novus. Um, there are some hard things in here. It's not all roses, like there are people saying. Stuff that's hard for me to process and read and be like, oh, people feel this. And so, you know, it, but it's a, it's an easier space sometimes to surface some of that. Because out of hand, you're saying this is anonymous. Your story is not going to be shared in a way that attacks, that tacks your name onto it. Um, it's easier to do that when you're eliciting stories and it's clear that that's the intent of the meeting. If people come to you and they say, this thing is really not working for me right now, we should do something about that. It can't be anonymous. If we are retaliatory, we are, we are, have to be accountable for that and we have to investigate that. And I recognize that it's uncomfortable and that a lot of families may feel as though they've had experiences. That make that not a trustworthy space. The purpose of this is to get the experiences in a space where it's not reporting, it's for learning. So that's.
Generally, I, I, I like this, I like the direction this has taken. I think I read the memo that was in Novus. Whenever I read it, it's yesterday and then I liked it and, uh. I mean, I like the direction of it. The timeframe was like, I don't know if I can make any of these myself, uh, but whatever. But now I understand. So I'm good.
Um, Liz, were you, I couldn't tell Liz Exton if you wanted to say something else? Or, okay.
Thanks.
Um, so what I, um, what I think we could do. Um, and Liz Holman and I talked about this for like a minute before the school committee meeting last night. Is if, if my thought is if the superintendent is planning on doing this, like setting these up anyway. I would be, I would be really happy to myself, like, see if I could come to, to learn how it works. To come to, you know, some, um, in part so that when the process is done. And, you know, if there's sort of some global, some reporting back that I, I understand better. Sort of where this information comes from and how it's gathered. Um, and I don't know if the other subcommittee members feel similarly, if you, we would, so sort of what, what Liz Holman said about like. Make this a, you know, if this is a project of the superintendent's office. We could participate to some extent and then we can continue at our next meeting to like the conversation. About other, you know, the, the rest of it, like do, are, what else? Is this what, is this what the subcommittee is looking to do in terms of engagement? Or like, do we want to keep talking about forms of these other, uh, community conversations? Um, I guess that's where I am right now.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just said, I agree with Laura Dillson just said.
Uh, yeah, no, I was gonna say, I think if the superintendent, um, is. It was, is already thinking about this and is, um, interested in, or planning to take this on and we can join it. As we're able and then.
Usually pretty technologically sad, but not today apparently. Okay, I'm gonna join the meeting. I'm gonna unmute myself. I'm gonna join on my phone and then I'm gonna not turn this off and I'm gonna walk out of my office.
Oh, we can't hear you, Laura.
Uh, Liz Exton, did you finish? You were saying that if this is a project to the superintendent's office and then. I lost you.
And then we can join it as we're able and see how it begins and, and the school committee and this. Subcommittee can, can see how we can continue it.
Okay. Uh, Cheryl?
Hi, um, I, I'm not sure if Dr. Holman is actually able to answer things at this point, because she's probably moved. Um, but I guess I was curious to be mentioned that they can, that things have already been doing listening sessions and I was curious like. With who and was this advertised?
Oh, I can, I can answer that. Those have been a part, I, I believe what she's talking about is those. Are internal to the APS as they work with the departments on. Build, budget building and priorities. So they're using that model internally.
Sort of. So we actually have done, one of the things we mapped out when we decided to work on this. Because we wanted to do an inclusive process for the budget. Was we identified for each member of the senior team, groups that we have access to. So like Allison, for example, I think has talked to the CPAC leads. Um, and I'm not sure if they've done this yet, but she was working on getting that on the calendar. And Wes has access to the ML PAC and, um, Margaret did a session with Metco students and families. So we have tried to get to different stakeholder groups in addition to internal groups. I also, uh, did some of the interviews with my superintendent advisory committee, which is a contractual committee of teachers. And, um, we did it with the administrative team as part of our sort of soft launch of the budget process. So we've tried to get a sprinkling, but it is internally heavy. Like right now it's mostly staff, which is why I was considering doing this with families. Because I wanted to have more voice from families in the data that we've collected so far. Because at the moment it's a little heavily oriented towards internal folks.
Um, Stephanie, and then I think we need to adjourn.
It can go super quickly. Um, from Liz's question back to the, the Threads Project, Welcome Center, et cetera. In my volunteering with them, my goal is exactly your question and to look for. The other stuff, to look for where to, um, put in place the communication and the, the, the stuff that's not the threads. Right? So, um, I would love to talk to the subcommittee more about how I can facilitate that. Because that's not your job to go there and volunteer and do that thing, right? Um, so I would love to have more of that conversation. Um, with Liz's proposal, Liz, Dr. Holman's proposal, um, you know, as a community member, um. Coming in with the listening sessions at the entry plan was amazing, considering where we came from before in particular. Uh, so that's incredible. And, you know, as a growth path of communication, if I look at like. Here's a goal of communication. We have a slice that's growing and developing and how can we. Address some other things, um, instead of only, um, you know, if you look at that from the community perspective, you get. Um, two hundred families each get five minutes once every three years. Um, and to look at something more like an ongoing, um, communication about other topics. Um, I really miss being able to reach out to the school committee. When I don't necessarily need to talk to Liz and just say like, hey, how does this homogeneous? Heterogeneous, homogeneous, whatever. How does the English class work, right? And, uh, Kirsty sat and talked to me about that for a long time and that was wonderful. It wasn't a problem I had. It wasn't. Anything I wanted to talk to the superintendent about. I'm like, just explain this to me. So, um, all of that to say is like. Please insert families and volunteers wherever possible to work on communication projects.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think Liz is already traveling home. Other people have to be places. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And I will say, I'm, I will work on scheduling another meeting for. Early in the new year so we can continue the conversations.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. Thank you all. Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend, everybody.